Recognize the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's going to be a little bit different. Acoles and personal stuff take care of MML, the guys that board members can take notes. So at this point, it'll be recorded and it'll be dictated per rule call. So I'm going to go ahead and start this. Rule call. Alderman, Tanner, passing. Alderman, Duda.
Here.
Alderman, Birkin.
Here.
Alderman, Thompson.
Here.
Prueled agenda. Do we have a motion? Make the motion to approve the agenda. Do you have a second?
I second the motion.
Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Any vote? Prueled agenda. Consent agenda. Amendment free fee, treasure, four collectors, port bills, repayment, and city clerk to pay for your appropriate census.
Make a motion to consent agenda.
I'm in bed motion.
Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Any vote? Public forum. SEMO Regional Party Commission.
Frank, do you want to kind of what you do?
Michael. Sure. So we are working on the wastewater project, the engineering program right now. One of the things that's going to feed into the amount of grant you can get for the actual construction of that project and all the other projects that we've kind of glossed over has to do with the income numbers in town. We've talked about that a little bit in the past. And so right now, the census data has your median household income at roughly $60,000, but has a wide margin of error. And that means at that level, that means that you're not going to be eligible for very many grants is what it boils down to. However, as we discussed, I think that your actual numbers are probably quite a bit lower than $60,000. And I think that whenever I talk to you, you all kind of agree that that's probably the reality. And a lot of times with the small towns especially, there are going to be some pretty wide margins of error on that census data. And so they don't just turn you away and say, try again in five years, and we'll update our numbers or whatever. You can do an income survey that typically is good for four years. And that's what we're mostly here to talk about tonight. How to make the other grants become reality through that income survey. So there are, it's a little bit more complicated than just going out and asking, how much money does your household make? And that depends on which agency you're seeking funding through. So right now, believe it or not, getting the different agencies to play nice together is not always the easiest thing to do. And so there are two, two different routes depending on which funding source you all go after. And I think you're probably going to go after a combination of these funding sources ultimately. And so I asked SEMO RPC to come tonight and discuss about the block grant requirements for theirs, for their income survey. The other two would be SRF and USDA community development. Those are the three main funding agencies. In a lot of ways, they'll play nice together, in other ways, they don't. And so if you're going to do the income survey, I think it allows you to do it in a way that meets the requirements for all three and do it once and not to go back in a month or two and say, hey, we want to do another income survey. These people will probably get that and just throw away and say, I already did this. So that's the big picture. Are there any questions?
Yeah, the mayor and I were discussing that earlier. I, one of the questions I had was, why not just barrage it? You know, instead of creating an additional delay by trying to integrate all of them, just do them all separately at the same time? And then when you receive the information of your, because that way you bypass the inability from one agency to communicate cleanly with another because you're not fitting a bracket, in a physical bracket in the way they like to see things. Because if you give them more, you know, one information that they don't particularly need and this one, you know, so if you just go all three, does it make a difference? Or you're saying no, I guess.
No, I think that's exactly, I think you're exactly right. That's the best way to do it. And if you're going to do it once, that's why I wanted to make sure they're here to talk about the requirements. They all, they update the requirements periodically. And so to make sure that if you're going to do this in conservatory once, it checks the box for all three. And some may have more information, or you may end up having two pieces of paper instead of one piece of paper. Someone has to put their number in twice, for instance. It just, it depends on the, the individual agency requirements.
If we have something that's not quite specific for that particular agency, but we have the data from the form that we construct, which is waiting to get all, everything combined into one integrated one, do we have the right to pull data out of a form for a particular household and apply it in another way? Or does it have to be just, you know, just one form, one signature?
The short answer is probably so, but the more detailed answer is it would be better. Having dealt with the different agencies, if they can just see on the checklist that everything's done and tidy, and they'll move on and accept it. I have with me, I brought multiple printouts, the ones accepted by DNR or SRF. And so this first page kind of describes it briefly. The second page on here is the actual survey. You'll notice it's not a very long survey. Sure.
There you go.
So it asks the main questions, what's the total household income, gross income? How many people are living at this address that are 15 years or older? The date, and that's it.
And so there's no identification?
That's right. So it is, this is where it gets a little bit complicated sometimes because people, not everyone wants to put their information on here. They want to be anonymous. And you don't want their data getting out necessarily, right? And you want people to be honest. You don't want them to exaggerate or, you just want, no numbers. If someone thinks that their numbers were posted, they might say, I mean, $3 million a year. They do? Sure, put that. But it's not, you know, a competition. You're just looking for the real numbers to see what grants you guys are eligible for. And one way to do that is to be anonymous. And so internally, what I've seen, I didn't interrupt you. What I've, what I've seen some people do is have a key, basically, and a number that it registers, like 1 through 175 or something. And they don't, they take your name off of it and only the mayor or clerk or somebody has that key that goes along with it just in case they have to go pull the data back out at some point. But that part doesn't remain publicly available.
Is there, out of all of our households, is there a minimum number? Let's be honest.
Yes. So you need, so at least for DNR and SRF, what you need to do if you are, if you live in 200 connections, which you all are in town, that means you have to survey everybody in town, at least make an effort to reach out to them. And you need at least 80% of the responses.
Okay.
There are multiple methods about how you can obtain those. My advice would be to send the letter with your, with the water bill or wastewater bill. Get attention, movement towards it. And typically, you're going to see a lot of, from my experience, between 30 and 60% right away, they just do it. And then you might track out a few more people door to door, call people in town. Luckily, it's a small town and probably everyone who knows, knows everyone and sees everyone.
So if you're not identified with the survey, then how do you know which ones that you have to call to get them?
Other than having the numbers like you said, that she would, she'd be able to identify?
Yeah, that's one way I see people do that. Yeah. And so then people have, there is going to be someone who's going to know, but that's not publicly available essentially. And so if you have a number.
Like if you have, like if you have 200 households, 150, whatever you have, what we'll need is a list of the residences, no businesses, no churches, but a list of the residences, and then we'll send that up to CDVG and USDA. This is the combined. Now look, compared, this is, well, I'm moving combined, yeah. Look at the difference between DNR and then this is almost what CDVG and USDA looks like. This is only for CDVG. They do have a combined in one piece of paper, community development block grant, USDA. It'll be this for CDVG, and then down here, USDA has some extra questions, which I will get you a copy tomorrow. I added my email right before I gave them here, so. And what, what most people do is you take your 150 houses, you number them, 1 to 150. Then you have to have a map so whoever the agencies are can see, okay, number one house, that's over here on the map, number 45, that's over here. So your list matches your map, and your list matches this. We'll put 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. So yeah, you have to match because otherwise, when you get 60% back, you can see, well, number 13 isn't back and 10 through 15 hasn't come back. So those numbers or those residences, you can go out and say, hey, can we do this? And most people send it out with your water bill, your electric bill, your wastewater bill. I would suggest having a public meeting before you do all this and say, this is what we're doing. We want to make improvements here. We need this much money over here. And in order to get the most grant money or the best deal that we can, we need an accurate income. And right now, the census data says that we make too much money. And obviously, most people will say, well, that's not true. But you need to document it. And if you tell people what you're doing, then they'll be much more receptive when you come. And if you look at it, that one asks you to write in your money. This just says.
From here to there.
Yeah, from here to there. And what you're looking for is anything under, below C is what we're looking for.
Okay.
Because for community development block grant, you have to be a low and moderate income percentage of 51% or lower. And right now, you're at 40.06. But this new census data has so, such a huge margin of error.
So since the DNR one's so simple, can we send this one to the DNR or they won't accept it because it's not in their language?
You will have to do both.
Okay.
DNR wants this one.
We have to do it or the residents have to fill out both ones?
Well, we won't do the income survey for you. Simply because we're strangers, we never get good results. But if you let people know it's coming and you let them know why, and whenever you send them these two pieces of paper, that's what you want back. DNR wants their form because.
Yes, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah. And then we'll tabulate them for you.
Right.
But they want to see the, the actual surveys to back up your tabulation. But yeah.
So the short answer is, I think that you would prob, you would be best served by doing both instead of you all entering.
At the same time.
Yeah. And just have them say, I know it's a little more right and I know it seems annoying, but trust me, this is the best way to do it.
Okay, just so you know.
Yeah.
And if you look on DNR, it says, what, over 15 or under, over 15, USDA and community development block grant. Don't like that. They wouldn't know all the people in your household, whether you're 15 or older or younger. So that's one question that doesn't, doesn't go with the other funding agency. And it's just like anything, you would think, if everybody does the same type of projects, you would have one income survey? It took a long time to get a combined one.
Well, I'm sure there's a lot of red tape as well. And speaking with Mary, she would be here tonight from the DNR water and, you know, from you, talking with you. I mean, they said if they had more response out of maybe $5 off the work or $10 or something like that, what's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, you can incentivize. One thing that getting Delta, the last one that I was part of, and SEMO RPC was involved in that one too. They offered, I think it was a $5 credit towards their utility bill. And that, that got people moving.
Yes.
I think more house to do than that. They, they may have, I can't remember.
And people can, you can get answers by the phone, you can do it in person, and you can mail it in.
And they use a Dropbox to, well, this is my problem.
The, the top sheet on the form that I gave you all describes the, that is the DNR website. It's door to door. When they say modified door to door, it was handled with, and then mailed surveys and telephone, as long as you record the telephone.
And community development block grant and USDA work the same way. If it's 200 or less, you have to do 100% handing surveys out. You need to have an 80% return. And for CDVG, you have to have 51% of the 80% return be low and moderate income or under C.
Great. Clear as mud?
Clear as mud.
And this probably opens us up to a vast array of opportunities.
Yeah. Well, depending on the results, but I think based on everything we've seen, you're going to have, I can't imagine a world in which your numbers are not favorable. Right now, you're, even though some of it, $60,000 makes it very difficult to obtain grants as a funding, but.
And these surveys, are they good to go out the door right now? Like we've been here about tomorrow morning and sent them out?
Yes.
This is the final form?
As far as I'm aware, it is, at least the DNR one it is.
DNR is, that is not.
Yours is not, DNR is.
We are not. We have to have your list of people, your residents, and we send it up to CDVG at Jefferson City, and then they'll give us a list of who you need to survey. Then it's, it's random, I don't know how they do it, but, well, no, this is.
Three will be all.
This is.
Yeah, they still have to say, yeah, they still have to say that.
And I believe April, the clerk, has already created that list?
Yeah, she started, and it should be done. Yeah, I remember that when we spoke last about that list, she started working on that. But the DNR one, should we just put that together or we should just do it separately? What do you recommend?
My recommendation would be to do them together. That's going to be, in my mind, that gives you the better response rate. Suppose it's knocking out or you're going to open it up again and say, eh, Eric did this or something, I can't be bothered to do it second time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's not an inconvenience, as I can see it, so.
And you can do entirely whatever your decision is. But the more work you do to let people know what you're doing and this is coming, then they won't be like as offended to fill it out telling you what I make, you know? So I.
Yeah, I was thinking, I mean, it's not that many phone calls. We can call in the evening or so, and you'll already know it's coming and why. Because I don't know that, you know, this is being filmed. I don't know that it's going to be broadly searched or anything, so. So, you know, y'all, we could even divide up the two boards, you know, into, you know, 25 people or 50 people each and call them, I don't know.
The big, the big selling point for it, in my opinion, is that it doesn't cost anything to do it and it has the potential to save you all a ton of money.
Right.
Great.
Well, the other thing to do too, you could write a letter too. And, I mean, you got readings coming up before we're over here.
Yeah, I wrote a letter last night and drafted it, so that's all done.
And we've had some communities do that and just go take it to their front door and say, hey, this is what we're working, this is what we're doing. It, it'll be coming, now don't be surprised, this is what we're asking you this information for.
So you're saying do it before the readings, Frank?
Well, what I'm saying is if you got your letters, if you got your letter, rub it up when you're doing your readings, because you got to go house anyways. You could put it in the door, you know, like we normally did the other letters too. You just run up to the boy, set out the mountain, that costs him money and there's cost of paper, but.
Paper, she doesn't stand up.
And you won't do it, yeah?
I don't know.
What's that to?
If I was, I might get there five months later, it's the way it goes. But yeah, I think it's beneficial when we follow, you know, by that, you know, for them, that we may be able to pour and then just opening up just other infrastructure projects like drinking water and, you know, and streets and all kinds of infrastructure, so.
If the grant funding is there, you just have to have the surface level criteria a lot of times that feel a lot easier. And if they're just using the data from the census, you all are not currently eligible.
Right.
But this is a way around.
And you mentioned streets. So that's above and beyond the wastewater and water related issues. Are there any other areas in addition to that that funding is available or anything like that for that?
Yeah, absolutely. They would actually be better to talk about the block grant funding than I would because it goes on, it goes beyond just what I handle. So as much as I would love to all just keep working with you on everything, there are other ways you can benefit from it that are separate from SEMO Engineering.
Great.
Community development block grant is HUD money passed down through the state of Missouri. And it's on a yearly basis, the applications will be due, COVID messed everyone up. So they're getting back to the regular cycle now, which is in April. So the next cycle will be April of 2025. And they have different pots of money. They have water and wastewater, those are separate pots of money. They have general infrastructure, basically for streets, electric, almost any public infrastructure you need. They, they will, they used to do housing, but they don't do that anymore. They have some community facility funding, but it's pretty specific that it serves a population that meets your LMI. Now, a lot of times that's your.
With that one?
Low and moderate income, that 51% we're talking about. That's the basis of their eligibility. But public infrastructure can be electric, it can be water, sewer, streets, drainage, stormwater.
What about like energy efficiency for those people, you know, like easily their homes or?
They will not do that. East Missouri Action Agency has a weatherization program to help different, mostly seniors.
Is mostly.
Or low income, they'll do that. The Department of Natural Resources has an energy efficient program, efficiency program. It's some of it's grants, some of it's loan, depending on what program you go through. Like Jackson City Hall is asking about replacing their, what, 20 or 30-year-old water. Schools can do that for water systems too. Lights in their buildings. City of Perryville did their streetlights and their traffic lights. So there's a lot of different programs out there. It just kind of depends on what you're looking for. No matter what you do, you're never going to get 100% grant for everything you need. There's just not enough money to do that for people. So sometime you're going to have to put some skin in it, even for the CDVG grant or USDA. For CDVG, you get points for having cash match and also for in-kind. Cash is just what it means. You have money set aside, say for the streets or the water, even in your sewer fund, you can use that. And they also do in-kind. If you have, I don't know, one of your guys and the city has like a trailer or a, a backhoe, it's work that you can help do. And that can be cleaning out ditches, that can be, if you do streets, breaking up streets, you can take the concrete away because your guys, their pay, that is value. And then the cost of the machinery they use or operate, that has a value. So you can use that as match too.
I got one other question on that, that survey. So when we do that survey for this, go around to this grant and say, next year, we decide to go for the water grant or a street grant, do we have to fill out another survey or?
For years.
It's good for four years.
And, and for CDVG and USDA, and I'm assuming DNR, it's whatever you do in the next four years. I mean, for CDVG and say, one year, you wanted two streets? They'll use that same survey and that same income for four years. It used to be two, which sometimes things don't even get started in two years, but it's four.
Yeah. You guys got any questions?
So yeah, I think, did you want to talk about the drinking water at all or?
Yeah, if you want to, you know, you talked about that, so we spoke on about.
Yes. So we had a site visit and tour of the wastewater plant and all that last week. And that was a good, good time. We attempted to be out there and see it all. It was interesting. Frankie needs a round of applause. Alive. It has served its purpose and your wastewater plant is indeed falling apart. So no one was surprised by that. You have done a remarkable job keeping it alive. That said, while we were discussing it, it came up that your drinking water system might need an ATLC as well. More than anything, you might have the option to switch to another water district that has much lower rates. So that's not set in stone. There's a possibility of that happening. The easiest way to make that happen is to go ahead and do an engineering for the drinking water side too. DNR has a really good program, just like the wastewater program we're doing right now, where they'll cover 80% of it unless you meet the disadvantaged community criteria, which you all almost do. And after the income survey, you very likely will be considered a disadvantaged community in their eyes and will be eligible for 100% grant for the report portion. So if that's something you all are serious about wanting to do, my advice, if you want it, would be to wait until you get income survey data back because you might be looking at 100% grant for that engineering for.
Great.
There's nothing set in stone. There are a lot of hydraulics that I need to look at before I can say, yeah, this is doable. But surface level, it looks like a really good opportunity for you all based on conversations we had last week.
Wonderful.
You can save a lot of money on your water rates potentially.
Yeah. I don't know that program you have, do you have, want to go with Dyma?
Yeah, Dyma Maps. That was what I showed you all, and I'll show it for Frankie here in a second. I showed you all on the tablet. I pulled all of your data into it from, actually SEMO RPC was hosting, is still hosting it. And they sent it to me on your behalf so I can pull it into Dyma Maps. Dyma Maps is a program I use with all my clients. I pull in your GIS, your Geo Spatial Information System, what it stands for. So you always have your maps available. You already have that serviced through SEMO RPC. But it's a good, good program. If you all want to use it, you can.
Oh, accurate is that, because I was looking at like the placement of the water lines and they don't seem to jive with what I know about my properties, you know, from what I've been watching a lot of that stuff.
Yeah, so the data that's in here right now doesn't have any water line information? I had to, I quickly threw this together based on the data that I had received from SEMO RPC. And so I just colored it with SOA and length so we could see what we were looking at.
It's all sewer?
It's all sewer. There is gravity sewer and then there's pressure sewer.
Now, what lines are gravity or what, sewer?
Service lines, it looks like. So the ledger's blown up there, the bottom now. So the purpose of that was by glance, I could quickly see what I was looking at.
Yeah.
You can always color code that later and give it different layers and things.
Oh, what surface line?
Surface line would be the connection between the home and either the grinder pump in your case, who all have blood pressure, and the surface up to the home and the gravity sewer, or depending on which area you're in.
Yes.
So that's typically. So that's typically with much smaller pipe and privately owned typically. But it's important to know if you're going to be going through with a backup, let's say, and you have to excavate through someone's yard, it'd be sure nice to know where that is before you.
And then give the coordinates like dead on for, I'm guessing. Does that give the coordinates and everything or not?
So I pulled that in. I don't know the, when that data was initially shot in, I think you all, your office actually shot it in with GPS equipment. I don't know if you deal with that side of it. Okay. So Jeremy, the director, is Jeremy in charge of it? Okay, he's the director of SEMO RPC and he knows more about the data when that was collected. So I didn't collect any of that, I just transferred it over and pulled it into an interface we can use. Anything we do in the future will be GPS located and go right like that. So forever remember it is. I've been there less than a long time ago as an operator and not going to find very things.
Do you, do the GPS geolocation, is that done retroactively? Like once you are on site, do you go back and you put grid points or anchor points down to identify stuff and then to recalibrate the mapping on that?
So you can. The best way to do it right now, if there's a GPS button you can push on the tablet right now, where it'll take you, lock you in to the best coordinates that whatever device you're using can come up with. Whether the phone or a tablet, that's typically plus or minus 15 feet, which is really good for being generally accurate, but it's not so good if you need precision. What you can do is use a receiver, GPS receiver, which I have and actually connected to the iPad. And it says, aha, now I'm plus or minus one centimeter accurate. So then you just go around top of it, shoot it in and move on. Or you can, if someone knows where something is, you can draw it in by hand. Pretty flexible.
Another question on this too, you want? So my point spot here, looking at, you say that's a two inch line, I know it's not a two inch line, it's a four inch.
Okay.
So, I mean, can you change that actually on this itself?
Absolutely. Yep. So you could just click on it and change it from two inches to four inches and go, just like that.
I was just kind of asking.
Yeah, good question.
Because there is some spots on there that's got the wrong size. I'll be there, I'll find out what it is.
Some cases like that, it's really easy just to go in and make a field modification to it, just change it from two inches to four inch and ta-da, just like that. You can take pictures and all kinds of things. I can nerd about, nerd out about all day.
All right, anything else? Mark, you got anything since you're in? Unfinished business, no, or Mr. Worley, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I just had a question about the FEMA lots, you know, for the rental or whatever, how you do it. I own the property down on Poplar Street with the big white shop just past the sewer plant. So I've been maintaining all them lots, which that's where I grew up, all them lots where our houses were before the flood in 93. But I maintain them and everything, but I wanted to see what the process was to, you know, lease them. I'd told April a few months ago, I wanted to get that taken care of, but then I had health issues coming up and I hadn't been back down here. So, but then I read in the paper where somebody else was wanting to move a business down there with all their equipment and parking on those lots. And I was told that's what they were wanting to do, but I wanted to, since I maintain, I've been, I've been maintaining them already, that I just wanted to keep it that way, you know?
It's not.
Keep it cleaned up.
It's not pretty. You have, because I had that, I'm floodplain 90% in the county, so I deal with FEMA stuff too.
Yeah.
And it's a pretty ugly thing. You have to go through a whole lot of red tape. It has to go through like the state if you're going to change what you're doing.
No, I'm not, I'm not changing nothing.
Well, I understand, but you said leasing it out for somebody, for somebody to do something.
No, somebody came here to the board meeting a month ago and wanted to do it.
Yeah, it's.
And I just wanted to.
I, I kind of ventured into that for someone else a while back and it's, it's not pretty at all. And in fact, I would almost discourage the attempt.
Yeah, I'm not changing it. I'm just hoping to keep it just like.
You're mentioning, well, the issue, to kind of backtrack a little bit, is last meeting, I believe it was, we had a gentleman come in that has, I guess, a lumber cutting business or something and was having business in lumber. And he requested permission to lease that lot, so he can park his equipment there. So we did, I responded to that and I didn't see what, that would be a terribly complicated issue, but we needed to look into it a little bit in terms of maintenance of the area, what's going on there, you know, what's getting deposited there, et cetera.
Right.
So that's kind of where we're sitting on it. And then I was informed about your request to the same, for the same area, same lot. And, you know, first, my initial, like knee direct response to that is first come, first served on that. So that's, that's kind of where I'm sitting there. Mark mentioned, you know, this is another issue, like discouraging it, yet we have precedents that are in the city and that the prior mayor had used car lock on the same type of ground, I guess, for many years. So there's precedent for doing it.
Right.
You can't say, you can't do this when it's been going on for years, you know, anyways. So we have, being that a precedent was established, we have to kind of maintain that or, you know, draft some type of internal legislation on what we're, how we're going to treat these areas.
Yeah, it was done years ago. So my dad leased all those, those lots for years. And then whenever he quit his mail business, he parked all his trucks down there. Well, right away, that was back in the Joanne Dunsey days and stuff. And they all sent letters and from FEMA that you couldn't park vehicles and you couldn't do nothing with the lot. All you can do is maintain it and that was it. But that was back, gosh.
That has not changed.
15 years ago.
I'm telling you, that has not changed.
Okay, well, and like now, all I do is I brush hog and keep it mowed. I mow the churches lot now since they don't and the abandoned mobile home lot down across in front of sewer plant, I keep them all mowed because I have no idea who owns them and nobody shows up to mow them. And the office lot right in front of me with all the equipment.
Yeah, no, it's a service to the city. I mean, Tom Knight does the same thing and he doesn't own those lots, he keeps them pristine, you know, and it's just even better.
And that's what I've been doing down there and that's why we didn't, me and the neighbors didn't want somebody parking a bunch of equipment, trailers and trucks and in and out and all ours because it is a business, you know, so I just wanted to, like I told April, I was like, well, you remember I told you months ago, I wanted to do this and get this taken care of? Well, she had just started here and then I had a heart attack and all this, so. It's a, but yeah, I mean, that's all I'm trying to do is just lease it and leave it like it is and mow grass. So I ain't changing nothing and putting nothing on there, so.
Okay. That's still up to you. I mean, I did look back in the prior, his dad did lease that back then, but he was told to remove the trailers. So, I mean, that's still up to you guys want to do. Mark, what's the red tape on that exactly?
Well, you have to, man, it's been so long since I've looked at email, if I could pull it up right now. You really have to contact the head of the floodplain.
Mediation.
Section at SEMA there in Jefferson City. And I could easily supply that, but they have to go through a whole process of reevaluating, they have to evaluate what you're wanting to do. And obviously that's on a case by case basis. So I certainly couldn't answer your question on whether that, but they have to go through a case by case basis on what you want to do. And then it becomes a matter of if they allow it and follow it, then it has to be rewritten into a certain plan of some kind on how that property is being used. So that being said, I mean, that's, that's the process on it. And I can, I could dig up that information and get it to, to folks.
So what I would suggest is to gather that information then and then, I guess, draft some policy. So that's going to apply to other areas as well, so that's formal and then we'll put it to the vote and add time after that.
And that's why I was just wondering if there was a, something, a way to do it.
Yeah, yeah. Proceed with it. But after the fact, I thought if someone's going to be operating a business off of lease grant from the city, then does that person have a business license? Do they pay city tax on, you know, and generated by that? And I don't know that any of that has been answered or done previously, so that'll factor into the equation as well. Mr. Worley hasn't maintained that for us, which has saved us quite a bit.
Right.
So once we get some more information, just to make sure where we're in, you know?
Yeah.
Because FEMA, when they buy out, it's right there when they buy out, you know?
Oh, yeah, it's a big pain for them.
Yeah. But as soon as we get more clarification, I'll be with you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Sound good?
Yeah, sound good.
All right. Unfinished business, done. New business. I'm sure you all have the coordinates correct. We're calling for the general election. Is that in your bag? This bill number 1006, an ordinance calling for a general election in the city of St. Mary, Missouri, setting the date of the election officials to be elected and the location of the election. Do you need me to read it or you want to be do it by heading only?
Uh, well, since it's, I'll read it really fast. Be ordained by the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Mary, Missouri as follows. Section one, the general election shall be held in the city of St. Mary, Missouri on Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, for the purposes of electing the following sitting city officials. Alderman award one for a two-year term, Alderman award two for a two-year term. Section two, all persons wishing to file for office may do so by filing with the city clerk during the filing period. The filing period shall begin on Tuesday, December 10th, 2024, at 8:00 AM and close on Tuesday, December 31st, 2024, at 5:00 PM. Section three, all candidates must be a citizen of the United States and inhabit the city for one year. Those filing for alderman must be resident of the ward from which he is, or she is elected. Candidates must be in good standing with the city whereby all taxes and money due to the city must be paid in full prior to the time of filing. Section four, the polling place, the city hall located at 782 Third Street, St. Mary, Missouri, polls will open at 6:00 AM and may open until 7:00 PM. Section five, the city clerks shall file a notice of the election and a local newspaper of general circulation prior to the filing date. Section six, the city clerk shall certify all candidates to the county clerk by Tuesday, January 28th, 2025. If it doesn't make sense, because the last day closing is the 31st, yet there's, oh, January, okay. Sorry. January 28th, 2025, pass and approve this the 14th day of November, 2024. Mayor Ann Becca, the task city clerk, April and the aldermen are listed.
And motion to, through first reading by heading only?
Uh, I think a motion to do the first reading by heading only.
You got a second?
A second motion.
All right. Rule call, Ned Hacker absent. Alderman Duda?
Here, yes.
Alderman Bourbon?
Yeah, yeah.
Alderman Thompson?
Yes.
Second reading. Bill number 1006, an ordinance calling for the general election in the city of St. Mary, Missouri, setting the date of election officials to be elected and the location of the election be ordained by the city of St. Mary's, followed by heading only. For second reading, do we have a motion?
Uh, I think a motion for second reading. We got it.
My second motion.
Motion made second. Alderman Hacker absent. Alderman Duda?
Uh, here, yes.
Alderman Bourbon?
Yes.
Alderman Thompson?
Yes.
All right. Majority and motion is adopted. Okay. I'm multitasking there with that. All right, resolution entered into sub to new building software agreement. We've been kind of talking about that a while now. So the Mary and the River Water and Valerie, how can you just pretty much take our buildings up where we got integrated and there's, I think it's a saving, close to like $2,600, I believe, is that, you remember a number? Yeah, compared to what it is, a lot more user friendly. I guess it works with every media system too, the way you should Neptune and do that and everything.
Yeah, they had, it was simpler and they had better ability to monitor response to water related issues as well and custom and ways.
So I think, you know, with the other company selling software in it, they can handle what we have now and you can add a little bit more to it without spending $2,600 to get a cloud platform and this is already a cloud platform. And we'll be getting the actual 2.0 version. We won't be getting the predecessor, so we'll be getting the newest. So in order to have that, we need to have a resolution. If you guys want to have a motion for resolution.
So make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second. Motion made second. Do a rule call. Alderman Hacker, that's it. Alderman Duda?
Uh, here, yes.
Alderman Bourbon?
Yes.
Alderman Thompson?
Yes.
Resolution passed and adopted. See if we can get that going. Mouse service roughly around $2,600, just filling software cover in. The telephone services, there's some beds, but she's still waiting on one more bed from T-Mobile for consolidated business. So if you guys want to hold off on that, it's totally up to you.
Yeah, get all the information.
Yeah.
Need a decision.
Is there anything else you guys have to want to discuss?
Main thing is just put the pressure on the, the income survey done as quickly as possible because it's, you know, it's mid-November already. And so we're just waiting to have that split information from you on that survey and then we can proceed. And then, as I stated, I drafted this in a letter last night for a brief explanatory letter for the need for the income survey and the fact that it's going to save us money and improve our, the quality of our lives because it's sewer and water. And it may, potentially it could even reduce our water rates, which I know everybody would be happy with.
Let me try to see here. Couple things.
And then, well, I guess it's.
I think it's fine.
Well, it's just, we have our new police officer here, so.
Oh, it's okay. I was looking at any other issues.
Oh, yeah, I was going to suggest that, I mean, it's winter now, we have two issues at hand, one of them is a salt spreader that is, do we have two of them or just one of them?
We got one, or we got two of them. One of them has broken belt, we're trying to get a whole, the snowstorm company over in Illinois to see what it. We're trying to get a whole, uh, um, the snowstorm company over in Illinois to see what it costs again dealing with for that. We tried to get the model number off of it and the model number we're giving them, they're saying they do not access to that anymore. That one number. The other one is engine. So anyways, the engine, it starts up, but we, I think in the Ford over here, last year, we installed the box and stuff in the Ford, but something, uh, engine won't start. You gotta get out there, start it in there yourself. And then the belt's been kinda acting a little funny, so.
So I spoke to, for that, in the department survey thing, but, uh, generally, we have to start thinking about snow and ice. Well, very soon.
Planning on being ready.
Yeah, okay. And then also budget-wise, uh, I think it's probably wise to start setting a little money aside because we don't have a bush hog. And although we don't need one now, we can start saving for it. So March rolls around, February, March rolls around, we have to know, uh, these downhand, I mean, what we thought it'd be more beautiful because we planned for it a little bit.
Yeah. Oh, I did speak to Bobby Fisher at, about that house down there. Um, so I'm seeing now, you know, bids on demolishing that one that is condemned.
Yeah, so there's a house that's condemned, that's kinda caved in, it's that tan one. Uh, and apparently it's come to our attention that someone is kinda squatting in the house where they have, they were ripped off by that real estate company and they're camping inside the house, which violates every city ordinance. And, uh, there's a safety risk because obviously they're, uh, I don't know where their, what facilities are used to dispose of body waste, but, uh, you have to assume they're either doing it in a five-gallon bucket or in the yard or someplace, so they can't be in there, they have to be moved out of there.
I went down Monday and told them they couldn't be there and I did post the nomination on the building itself. Looking, laughing with me and April were back in the record, so. Other than that, uh, trying to, okay. I looked for, uh, somebody told me they could find, can you take a ten-foot chain and lower that, cut that down for that or not? We call it spreader, hydraulic one.
You got me lost in what you're.
The highway? Everybody keeps saying a ten-foot chain, cause it's a nine-foot. You can take the links out, make it shorter, is that true or not?
No, you can, you can put links in.
Okay, I don't know.
It's gotta have press.
Yeah.
We need to take it to a machine shop and, uh, take it down.
Alright, that's what I was.
Cause I'm not pressing it.
Saying trucks going to shop, hopefully the eighteen, they get a kids' and seven hydraulic issue. A cooler issue too as well, so that's gonna be another expense for that thing. Do you know anything else that has any issues going on? Have you got a comment? That one there? Alright. Department reports, emergency management, April, she's not here. Police department. You wanna give a talk or?
Yeah, so welcome to, uh, the city of St. Mary's. How many guys have you been on already?
Uh, officially, just a few. Kinda getting settled in with everything, uh, software system and whatnot. Kinda getting all that squared away now, there's some issues which, but.
Do you need to take those issues out now or, uh, or, uh, in closed session?
I'll leave those on that. And I got those, I got confirmation for the company, they have a handover confirmation on the house, so.
Okay.
So, uh, previously, uh, within, whatever meeting needs, you'll issue, you'll go over how many calls you've had and for what issues. And, uh, that's probably all we need to know, as well as things that you may go exploring on duty that need to be addressed. We welcome that they're not gonna be, so the citizens know what's going to happen.
Absolutely.
And, and the pad, Mr. Worley, down low, let me just straighten that.
Yep.
Is there anything else you guys need?
Uh, no, I don't believe so, I know, other than that.
And you plan on, you're relocating down here as well?
Right.
Correct? My question is on that too. So when he relocates, is he still gonna be passing to park the car here? Or is he gonna be taking it home?
He's too.
Uh, well, if he's in the city, as long as it's not used, he could keep it. From my perspective, he could at home.
They're gonna call him, just like anybody else.
Yeah, but he could respond to you instead of coming down here, getting the car. Actually creates additional delays in responding to a call.
Yeah.
So it's more efficient, I think, to keep it re-logged, just that it's only used for business purposes.
Yeah. And then I've been giving them a timesheet, it's kinda hard. And like I used to do, case numbers or whatever, ticket numbers and, but that RSGPS, they have.
Yeah, like I should be officer of, so.
Yeah.
As a clinic, you have to check.
Yeah. Don't ask him what he has on the weekend. But I, I would like, we, didn't we used to do these even when you worked here? These are a lot easier, wasn't it? So do you want me to go back to these? It's like more, I think, and the.
Everything's already categorized, or categorized for what you do. Like, or our, or our timesheet's gonna have, uh, it's gonna have ways to get a wastewater, water's gonna have, um, uh, you know, ground your, uh, miscellaneous, miscellaneous, and like Venice or City Hall or something like that. And then it's got, um, cemetery mowing, buyout mowing. It was so much easier, cause if he was out there and then buyouts for eight hours, you just worked eight hours down on the buyout, you know, or whatever you had to do, so.
They'd have a shovel, we're like our labor high spot too, and then stuff like that, so. That's just something, I don't know if April was ever gonna make that in that time card. I like it, though, didn't get me wrong, but it won't even read my brain.
That's cause you burned them off with the.
Oh, okay. So, but no, I just wanna touch base with that, so. Yeah, welcome, and we'll be interested later in.
Awesome.
Um, fire department, Kathy?
Um, well, uh, we had eleven calls this month, all medicals. And then, uh, we got our all barbecue, and we were pretty successful on that. Um, we did fifty-fifty, I don't remember how much it was altogether, or the half, uh, but, uh, Annette wanted, you know, um, send it, or gave it back in donation to us. Um, everything is, I appreciate everybody that helped out and, uh, put their time in. And, um, they, uh, a couple people donated a few things to us. Uh, I know gas station donated quite a bit to us. And then, um, we had another individual donate stuff to us. And then we had another one that had some donations from Thrive or whatever it is, or they went. Um, but they, uh, they donated, uh, some stuff to us, too. Um, we're in the process of, uh, getting lights done on forty-two. Uh, I think that probably most of them are similar. Uh, what we did is with our funds that we got from our barbecue, we've been buying equipment that we necessarily need, but trying to keep from having to spend the funding just out of the city to buy. Um, so we've been using that to do that, um, so. But everything else has been pretty kosher there. Uh, I know we lost one fireman, uh, hopefully he returns in a few years here. But, uh, I do have two other ones that's really interesting, I'm waiting for them to kinda talk to me a little bit more. Uh, every time I tell them we had a meeting, they're either working or out of town, so. Um, hopefully I can get caught up with them to get them on the department, so. Um, but like I said, everything's been going pretty, pretty well up there. Uh, we're gonna start hopefully here, weather getting cooler, well, per se. Um, seeing outlook and weather is crazy, we're still basically spring weather outlook. And, um, uh, soon as it starts breaking to colder weather, we'll be working on the firehouse, getting the, just the meeting and then, so.
What's the status of the fire departments merging?
Uh, we're waiting on the lawyer to get paperback work back to us, tell us what else we need to do. Uh, we sent our petitions in, uh, so we had enough on the petition to present in front of the judge. Um, so waiting on to hear, would we have a meeting next month? Uh, I think it's December tenth, and I think we're supposed to have it, so. Uh, to find out what's actually all going on. Uh, but yeah, he's going through, the lawyer's going through all the paperwork right now, so. We ain't gonna hear nothing until he gets through everything and seeing, you know, what kinda other material he needs or anything like that, so.
Is that, what's the time for, for this, like five years or something, or before it's a reality?
Well, so we're trying to get it on the ballot. Hopefully by April or next November, we're trying to get it on the ballot. And if we can get it on the ballot and pass it, we go to a district. But it's gonna take a couple years to get fully emerged to a district. I mean, we will be underneath district standards and, you know, district board then, but it, it takes time, just like you're building a brand new business, it takes time, so. Thank you.
Street department, does he have anything else on that? Do you have any?
Uh, I didn't, street department.
Oh, no.
No, no, okay. I'm downed by.
Oh, I didn't know if you're downed by, sorry. Doc, you got anything for streets?
Uh, I, I, I don't, I've been working, I'll have time now to, I started over the weekend to adding ground to the size of the roads that were done. And probably before Thanksgiving, I'll have it done by the water tower too. Cause you dumped a load off there and probably eighty percent complete and then third street, third in locusts.
Cedar, they brought me by Frankie, I guess some people had some complaints and it is getting overgrown. But it was, yeah. I got, so, I have a bad, so, how, what do you wanna plan?
I'm just gonna cut and haul it off, I guess.
That's what I was planning on, said I didn't know if it was something special.
Standing in the back of truck and cutting as hot as I can go, so.
I was on trailer, I was throw on trailer, cut and go, so.
Um, the other issue I had too, and I, I know you guys go around town, but, uh, I did get a couple asking about it. Um, up there on Spruce Street, uh, between Spruce, or between sixth and seventh, one of the little sections of Spruce there. That road is buckling up really bad and I think it's from the tree roots, I don't know, but that is probably gonna cause an issue during plow season, so we might start tearing up road. Uh, what needs happening, we actually need to saw, cut it, dig it out, find out if that, if it is a root for that, take the roots out, but.
Is it a narrow section or a couple sections?
It's a couple sections there, uh, where it's getting really bad. I mean, throughout the year, it's been small, but now it's getting to where.
It's a speed bump.
Run, speed bump and run a plow truck, it probably goes through a asphalt, so.
Yeah.
If you wanna take a look at it tomorrow.
Yeah.
Uh, we can look at it, kinda address it, to see what we need to do.
Okay.
Are you thinking cut and patch or cut and fill or ride?
It's gonna be cut, dig out, put a rock in, pack it, and we probably have to. It'll be, it'll be a square patch, pretty well, I feel the same. But I don't know what time it's gonna be to get it, so.
Well, I'm home tomorrow, so we'll be like.
I'll be here in here tomorrow, so we'll go and look at it.
Sorry, bro, um, do you all have any more questions for me tonight?
No.
As long as you'd like it to last, I promise I'm wiping up the keys if I could, for bedtime.
But if you want me to stay, well, we. They're not breathing today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not so many keeper kind of.
A lot.
So if you had your fire like that.
Okay, how would it be different?
She's, oh, this big, I'm worried about this shit. She can go out and surround her.
Yeah.
They do. A ten-inch degree.
Oh, my goodness. Yes.
If it, if it ever.
Yeah. Yeah.
Take care.
Hey, Michael.
Yep.
Water, wastewater department, and that's on here, frankly, there's a.
Um, I'm not gonna say it, but everything's been going through the culture at the waterside, I didn't see nothing else from them.
I was, I need to like your input because the, the, uh, I mean, Michael just left, but he examined, you know, the site we do of the lab and stuff there and now everything's.
So, so, well, I was talking about waterside, actually, being through culture a minute, but wastewater side, uh, you walk in with the engineers over it, taking, showing them. It's, it's amazing, and I mean, I know it's amazing myself, but keeping that plant alive and keeping it going.
Yeah.
Uh, it's really amazing of what's going on there, so. I mean, when we were just going through, you know, talking about the lab and stuff, the lab needs to be actually away from other barriers, cause it's supposed to be your cleanest area.
Yeah.
Uh, and lab work, um, electrical, uh, panel, uh, yeah, it looks like a OSHA hazard, so. And, um, the outside, you know, at the plant, when we talking, we was kinda talking about, you know, what are perspectives of, are we gonna grow bigger, you know, since we're gonna grow any, uh, any more business? You're gonna, I mean, we don't know that, I mean, maybe in the future, hopefully, I don't know. Um, but we was talking about, you know, maybe hopefully building two new clearfathers, is what we was talking. Um, or building just another one and trying to rehab the one we have. But we was kinda figuring rehabbing the one we have is gonna be a lot more expensive. Uh, because the flooring and stuff, and I showed them pictures, there's, there's hairline cracks. We don't know how big that crack goes down into it, but. Um, everything's steel, and you said that stainless, so everything's rotten. Um, so we was kinda going over all that and it looks like perspectives that it needs help.
Yeah, I mean, that's almost like a wrong conclusion, but the, but one of the things that we have to do in short term is keep the lab clean, you know, like I cleaned it once and I haven't had to do it again.
Well, it is, it's not just, it's not just the laboratory being clean, it's just, uh, the aspects of.
Well, it is.
The aspects of, you know, I mean, you're dealing with wastewater, not being able to, it's not clean, clean water, you know. And like we're doing back D samples or something down there, you know, on, you know, drinking water. Uh, but the aspect of it is, you know, we start saying, working on a small engine, on top of that lab, you know, cabinet and gasoline, you know, runs into the sink and other things wind in that sink, you know, it could cause a chemical reaction, so that's, that's what we get. And that's usually by itself, we should have, I don't know.
No, for sure, but in the short term, it, it needs to be kept up clean. And the issues like working on a smaller engine, there's a little shop through the door there that, that stuff could be done.
I've seen it, I've seen a lot of things get worked on top of that cabinet, so.
Yeah.
I did check on the permitting status. There was some backlog, you'll be probably getting the year permit down there in June of next year. Just to let you know.
Yeah, with three years, right?
I know, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what we was talking about the other day.
Cause, uh, Mary called me, cause they're trying to look for another thing with them. And she's like, it's not showing, so I just followed up on it, cause I, I guess the turnaround rate's pretty high up there right now, so.
They should be sending me a draft form as well, so.
So, but they're gonna expedite it to see if they can get quicker.
Uh, the other, the other thing is, is on the water side too, uh, we're doing our laden copper inventory. Pretty well on our side of our inventory, we are, um, copper PVC. Uh, we, you know, uh, two thousand twelve, two thousand eleven, we had all new replacement inside the town. Uh, up on the subdivision side. two thousand twelve, two thousand eleven, we had all new replacement inside the town, up on the subdivision side, that was done in two thousand, I think it was, something like that up there, that's all PVC and copper on our side, so. What we did is we send a evaluation form out, basically like a survey form, telling people that, hey, you know, what kind of material you have in your house, you got galvanized, copper, PVC, that's what we need to know, so. By the way, we can get it in our system, the same way it is, because it's basically trying to go to, and it's not gonna happen overnight, but we're trying to go to, get away from lead, anything lead.
Are we talking about the drains or the water supply?
Your water supply, your drinking water supply. Anyway, we're trying to get away from everything, but it's got lead, leaded, so. We're supposed to, I don't know if April sent that out yet, we're supposed to send letters out with that, I don't know if they got that together, I think they did.
I think she just did, you know.
So anyways, but on our side, with B and R right now, we are good, we had all our stuff turned in by the fifteenth. And anyways, so, we're good with B and R for right now, until we get the survey back, and then we gotta follow up with them, on what's on the customer side. But other than that, I don't have nothing else on the waters, two grinders, we did four or two more grinders. We got one for standby, for good case something happens and emergency wise. We did get the other one replaced, that we need to get replaced, so they're all installed, that need to be replaced, so. Right now, everything's been going pretty kosher with them, I mean, and then the folks who do their killing is gonna start affecting the electronics in them, so. It's kind of the over system, so, that's all that, so.
Is that it, Frank? Oliverman Thompson, you got anything?
Um, I know that April reported last month that there were some complaints about dogs, I don't know if there was any following.
Yeah, Deputy Barton has them down here, but like I expressed before, we don't have the facility and the way the requirements now compared to our old regulations of how to take care of them. Don't need those criteria, so that is up to the county, because East Rain and ASPCA and all that, everything, so, I mean, we can do our due diligence, but it's just one of them deals, I mean, back in the day, things were a lot different. Now you have a virtual environment, everything's got to do, there's ten day observations, there's so much that goes into it. If I start city, don't even do any more, it costs them over a million dollars just to operate it. You know, it's, it's not worth, so I don't even know why we even have that department anymore, really.
Yeah, I know we need to re-around with that.
There is something that needs to be evaluated. Any on the parks so far?
Yeah, first I want to thank you for the work that you did cemetery and putting the flags up.
Oh, that, Oliverman Bergman, her husband, and also Dad and Jack Lomond, they donated the shop all the way, so.
That was nice.
The hundred and eighty flag.